2016, would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda. Second?
We have a motion by Lindblad, seconded by Prowedo, to approve the agenda for September 20th, 2016. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next item on that agenda is the spotlight on recognition. Dr. Flotman?
Yes, as you know, we are a couple of weeks into the new school year and I just want to kind of take us back to the very beginning of this school year when we brought our staff together and want to pay attention to a couple of people that were honored that day. So, our opening kickoff meetings, we're talking about belonging and we kind of did a talking about I belong with I be. And so, that was fun. Excuse me, we did that with both the new teachers and then the rest of the teachers when they came back. So, belonging to Fridley for 25 years are four people, which I think if you do the math, then that's 100 years of belonging. And so, our first recognition went to Karen Brisboy for 25 years of service. Karen is a clerical support person that works at the ALC. Our second person is Sue Culbertson. She too is a clerical support person and she is the pulse of the Fridley High School. She also is an alumni of Fridley as well. And then we have Cindy Richmond, who is, I think she is kind of the heart of Stevenson. She too has been there. She is the clerical support and the lead secretary for that building. And finally, there is Linda Wolf. And Linda has worked in a variety of places, but currently she is a secretary clerical support at Hayes Elementary. This was a pretty incredible year 25 years ago when these four women joined the group. So, thank you very much for their years of service and we congratulate them. We also then talked about our teachers of excellence. Each year, our staff nominates someone from their own ranks in each of the buildings. And so, this is truly an honor because this is someone who has been tapped for being a teacher of excellence within their, among their peers. So, first off, we have Andrew Dower. Andrew is a first grade teacher at Stevenson Elementary. And that smile kind of says it all, doesn't it? And next, we have Tina Utley. She is fourth grade at Hayes Elementary. And I think a number of years ago, we had a young man here that did his fourth grade project and said that this lady was like the best. I remember him being here and talking about Ms. Utley. And then we have Joe Weingart, who teaches math at our middle school. He also this year is stepping into a new role of an instructional leader as well. And we have Ms. Carrie Rona. She is a dean of students at the high school. Carrie has actually a little more history with us than just her tenure as an employee because she was a Northwest suburban JAG person. And I forgot what JAG stands for, but it was kind of a career readiness program that we had in our early days. And so, that's really how we got to know Carrie. And then finally, we have Jennifer De Mars. And Jennifer is a language arts teacher currently at the ALC, but Jennifer has also worked at the middle school as well. So, congratulations to those teachers. And then throughout the year, you know, here at the board meeting, we do a monthly employee of the month. At the very end of the year, in May, the leadership team looks at all of the individuals that got the monthly award and we pick out one of those individuals as the employee of the year. Drum roll, please. This year's employee of the year is Kirby Rachio. And Kirby is a paraprofessional that works in the ALC program at the middle school. She was overwhelmed. It was really fun. This year, we had the opportunity to bring the pairs in a day before school started for their professional development day. And rather than doing it on the normal back-to-school workshop, because Kirby was not able to attend that, we did it in front of her peers with pairs. So, that was pretty special. So, congratulations to Kirby.
Thank you. Next, we move on to superintendent staff reports, beginning with the school resource fair.
And I think Jael is gonna...
Okay. Say, who's gonna jump in there?
Yeah, Jael is gonna jump in there.
Gonna fill in for Alota? Good luck with that.
Yeah, I know. Okay, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Jael McLemore and I'm just gonna touch very briefly on the resource fair that we had in August. This is our fourth year, third year that we are doing this. It's fourth? Fourth year that we are doing the resource fair. And this is an event that is normally organized by Alota Sims, who is our family engagement liaison now based in Fridley Middle School. The previous year, we had about 500 families come through and pick up backpacks. This year, we had maybe about 450 backpacks that were distributed, some are left over that she's continuing to provide supplies for students who may still be in need. So, again, she's very, she always thanks the community for coming together and providing the supplies. Our local churches, the Fridley Senior Program have supported this event ever since its inception. And this definitely will not be something that we will be able to put together without our community coming in and really digging deep and providing the supplies that our students need. It's definitely a great way to start this school program for students, for families, because in addition to the school supplies, they also get haircuts, make sure that they are ready for school on day one, and resources for the community. And they are connecting with local agencies that provide assistance throughout the year. So, really, it's a one-stop for families to come in and find out more information about even school registration. And I think in the past, we've also partnered with a few organizations that may be hiring. So, whatever those resources are, it's a great place for families to connect right before school starts. So, again, you know, thank you to the community on behalf of our family engagement who always put this event together. And they also get volunteers from the school community itself, different buildings who come in and support that.
Great, thank you. Well, before you run away, your next on the agenda also to talk a little bit about our legislative platform.
Yes. So, every school year, Fridley Public Schools put together a legislative platform. And this is pretty much the priorities that we feel that we need to address with our legislators in terms of what our needs are. It's not something unique for Fridley School Districts, but I mean, for public schools to do this, but it's also an opportunity for us to get together with our legislators and talk to them about our school districts, share some information with them, and then look at ways that we can continue to advocate for that platform throughout the year. So, Fridley Public Schools is an E-12 International Baccalaureate School District, 3,000 students, and 1,200 of them are open enrolled. 55% of our students are minorities and 64% of our students receive free and reduced meals. 16% of our students are English learners and 16% are in special education. And those numbers do not necessarily correlate. International Baccalaureate Program, again, as I said, we are a magnet school district. We provide a primary years program, a middle years program, diploma program, career-related program, which I'm happy to say we received authorization to provide this year. And we provide an EMT, Emergency Medical Technician, Emergency Medical Responder, and Computer Technician Career Track for our high school students. This year, we were also one of the few school districts that received the voluntary pre-kindergarten program. And we started that this new school year with about 80 slots that we were allocated that have already been filled out. And I do believe we have a waiting list for students, families who want to place their children in pre-K program, who, you know, maybe sometimes during the year, we may figure out a way of making sure that those kids are also served. And our voters approved a referendum last year that provided us with much-needed funds. So, we are in the process of completing Phase One of those voter-approved construction and upgrades. If any one of our community members have come to the high school, they realize that they cannot go, they cannot park through a certain entrances because construction is still going on. But hopefully, before long, that our gymnasium will be finished and our auditorium will be finished as well. So, we have five buildings in our district. Hayes Elementary School, which was built in 1965, and provides the PYP program for students in preschool through grade four. And Stevenson, our other elementary school, which is the younger one, the newer one of our buildings, 1968, also provides preschool, PYP program for students in grades preschool through four. Fridley Middle School, which is the oldest building in the district, NYPD program for students in grades five through six, and that was built in 1954. And Fridley High School, 1960, that provides the NYPD program, DP program, and the new CP program for students in grades nine and 12. And of course, our Fridley Community Center, that provides programming for our babies as young as infants through senior citizens. So, as you can see, our buildings average about 55 years of age and rely heavily on state funding, no, levies to support construction and upgrades that are needed for buildings that may be that old, as you all know. With the time, things break down and have to be maintained. So, our students continue to learn in a safe environment. So, the Fridley Public Schools is a member of C, which stands for Schools for Equity and Education, and AMSD, which stands for Association of Metropolitan School Districts. So, these two groups every year advocate for whether it is school reform or tax reform with legislators every year. So, there are many school districts in Minnesota that are members of these two groups. And this year, their primary focus is on tax relief and reform, because a lot of the school districts that are their members struggle with raising funds to provide for whether it's maintenance and facilities to programming and knowing that there is inequity in some of those funding. So, if you're in a school district like Fridley that has low property wealth, it's an overwhelming tax burden for the homeowners versus other school districts that have greater wealth and do not struggle with those same issues. So, just trying to make sure that there's that equity in funding so that all students in Minnesota continue to learn in safe environments and have the basics that they need to be able to continue their learning and be productive and graduate on time. Basic formula is another thing that they talk about because I think there has been an increase, but that has not kept up with inflation. So, just advocating for a 2% increase and establish a cost of living adjusted to address the current rate of inflation to prevent future underfunding of the basic formula. And the final one being quality early learning programming. And we kind of talked a little bit earlier about our voluntary pre-K programming. And we know that as we have these students come into our district, if it's a new mandate, there are other issues that may be associated with it. So, when we are looking at high-quality teachers, we are looking at leadership to be able to support the work and the learning that the students are doing. And we are looking at space, because sometimes it's not always that easy to construct a building. You may not have funding to do that, but would it also be possible to get approval to lease building and spaces so that we can continue to provide services for greater students who may need it and not have kids on waiting list? And just the flexibility for school districts to be able to customize the programming that they provide for their students based on what their needs are and the individuality of their families. So, sometimes, you know, you're working with different demographics and you're working with different type of learning readiness, just being able to customize that and not being locked into something that is, you know, universal is helpful to districts as well. And just making sure that the funding that our preschool students are weighted the same as kindergarten students. They are one grade apart and they are in the same sort of elementary level, but then they are not weighted the same. So, if our preschool students, we are getting .5 off or something similar to that, the school districts have to top that to be able to provide all the programming that they need. And as you know, the cost of education continues to go up, whether it's in programmings, whether it's in staffing, whether it's in buildings and, you know, providing supplies for students to learn. If the inflation, as we talked about earlier, has not kept up with all of those and there's a funding inequity, then it becomes challenging for school districts to make sure that even the younger ones have equal opportunity and are in safe places that are conducive to their young minds to continue to learn. So, here are some photos of our four-year-olds who just started with us and highly engaged. Our communication specialist, David Weber, went and spent some time with them and really took some great pictures. And, you know, as you look at those faces and highly engaged as they are, we just hope that we continue to provide opportunities for more families to be able to enroll and take advantage of this grant that we have been given. And so, again, part of the work that we support is making sure that there is fairness in school funding, that the zip code that our families and our student living should not determine the quality of schools that they learn in and the quality of education that they receive. All students deserve that opportunity. And if we can work with our legislators and our governor to make sure that there is that equity, then, you know, all our students stand a fair chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No. Thank you, Jael. Moving on to our business action items, beginning with a resolution to accept gifts. Fortunately, we do have a very thoughtful public out there and that does give us donations every month. And so, we have a resolution to accept those gifts and thank those donors. And in this past month, the following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary. The Fridley Women of Today donated $150 worth of school supplies. And Patrick McCoy donated $200 for classroom upgrades. Donations to Hayes Elementary include the Fridley Women of Today school supplies, the Wells Fargo Community Shares of $100, and the Fridley Lions Club donated $2,719 to replace some basketball hoops. At the middle school, donations were received from Barb Bergseth, a trombone and some soccer shoes. The Conexas Credit Union supplied office supplies. Scott O'Leary donated $13.47. Stephanie Sharp, $35. An anonymous donor totaled $43.05. And with that, I would accept a motion to accept these gifts and thank these donors for their contributions.
Motion to accept. Second?
I have a motion by Prowedo, seconded by Lindblad, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussions? As a resolution, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Our next item is a resolution adopting the 10-year-long-term Facility Maintenance Plan. That gets to be a mouthful there. LTFM is so much easier, isn't it?
So, tonight, we have an anticipated update to our 10-year-long-term Facility Maintenance Plan that was adopted in July. We were anticipating changing, changes were probably going to be coming after we got the preliminary September tax certifications for tax impact. So, tonight, we have an update to that plan that's being brought to you guys for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept or to adopt the 10-year-long-term Facility Maintenance Plan?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Lindblad, seconded by Prowedo, to adopt the 10-year-long-term Facility Maintenance Plan. Again, as it's a resolution, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Next up, we have a motion for the second reading and adoption of several policies. I think we have a couple of different folks on this one. So, Matthew, you want to start?
Policy 854 Energy Utilization Management has no changes from the first reading and is brought to the board for approval.
Right. Also, I don't know if Laura, if you want to make any note with regard to the student discipline or the staff notification of violent behavior by students?
Thank you for providing those. I was hoping we didn't have to go back and forth. Jill and I were just talking about that. And as I talked to Jael in the back, I'm looking at Policy 506, Student Discipline, 520 Student Surveys, and 529 Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. There have been no changes since the first reading.
All right. Thank you. All right, those are the four policies that we have for second reading. Any discussion? If not, I would accept a motion to approve this and accept the second reading.
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Prowedo, seconded by Lindblad, to accept the second reading and adoption of Policies 854 Energy Utilization Management, 506 Student Discipline, 520 Student Surveys, and 529 Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next item is the deletion of Policy 999 Core Community Values. It is oft-edal.
I present to you the deletion request for Policy 999 Core Community Values with the adoption of Policy 104 District Mission Statement and some other recently adopted policies and updated policies. All of the content of Core Community Values can be crosswalked and viewed in multiple other documents. Just as a reference, besides Policy 104, we see the content in the IB learner profile, the IB approaches to learning document, the IB principles to practice for the PYP in action, NYPD community in service, and diploma program creativity, action, and service, and in Policies 413, 596, 514, and 524. Because of that repeated content, I would ask that you would delete Policy 999, since we already have it existing in multiple places.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to delete Policy 999?
Move to delete Policy 999. Second?
We have a motion by Lindblad, seconded by Prowedo, to delete Policy 999 Core Community Values. Any further discussion? Hearing any? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a motion to request to advertise for some bids.
Yeah, so tonight, we are asking the school board to approve the request to advertise for bids for the building construction projects for the second year of the building bond issued in pass in November of '15. The projects will take place district-wide and include deferred maintenance, renovations, security upgrades, HVAC, maintenance improvements, fire suppression, and technology. So, we bring that motion before you for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the advertisement of bids?
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Prowedo, seconded by Lindblad, to approve the request for approval to advertise for the bids for the products, projects, as we talked about. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next motion this evening is approval of a memorandum of understanding with regards to the ECFE teacher vacation. Jennifer?
Thank you. We brought a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding that's been recommended to be entered into between the school district and the Fridley Education Association. Clarifies vacation language for the ECFE teachers. They have a section of the contract that specifically articulates a number of sections for them. So, it adds clarification to that and how it fits to that.
All right, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Move to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Lindblad, seconded by Prowedo, to approve the MOU with the ECFE teacher vacation. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. And our final motion for the business action items this evening is a preliminary pay 2017 levy certification. Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, so tonight, we're bringing before the board the request to approve the maximum authorization of the preliminary levy for payable 2016, certified in 2017. The levy is increasing. The increase is overall below what we've seen in the last prior two years. And we will be having a final certification in December. So, this is a preliminary certification here in September. Final certification will happen at our December 20th meeting. And we'll have a truth and taxation hearing held at 7:00 PM prior to our official business meeting at 7:30 that night.
All right. And tonight, we are doing it as the maximum, knowing that we can reduce it going in the intervening months between now and December if we need to.
That's correct.
Or could we decide that? But we can never go more than anything we approved for this evening.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. With that, any further questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the maximum authorized preliminary levy for 2016 payable in 2017?
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Prowedo, seconded by Lindblad, to approve the maximum authorized preliminary levy for 2016 payable in 2017. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the meetings of the school board and work session that were held on August 16th, 2016, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements, the assurance of compliance with the state law and federal law, excuse me, state and federal law prohibiting discrimination, as well as a request for the choir to visit Chicago, Illinois on March 31st through April 3rd. One item of note that I would like to just make aware, in the resignations, or excuse me, retirement section of this month, Laurie Schulzenberg, who's a longtime teacher in various different grade levels, as well as I believe she's doing special ed this year at Stevenson, has tendered her retirement as of, I believe, was it January 1st? 7th? Okay, January 7th. So, we certainly sad to see her go, but certainly wish her well in her retirement. That, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Lindblad, seconded by Prowedo, to approve the consent agenda of the routine action items that I previously listed. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the motion passes. Next on the agenda, we move on to written information, beginning with student enrollment.
In your packet is the first Friday, which was September 9th, of the numbers that were in there. And you can see by comparing to the adopted budget, which is on the far-right corner, that there is a pretty significant increase there. These numbers have stabilized a bit and withdrawals have been talked about. You know, it takes 10 to 15-day to-do drops. So, people have been talking to people. So, you will see an adjustment for October 1. However, the numbers are still quite strong. And so, we are pleased with what has happened and make sure that our staffing is reflected to make sure that we are covering the sections that we need to there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd invite Amina back to the podium to discuss the first reading of Policy 104 Mission Statement.
I'm submitting Policy 104, School District 14, Mission Statement for your approval for its first reading. The language changes in this are not significant, but they are meant to create some uniformity in the flow of the language, to clean up some errors. And just to note, on Section C, for the last two bullets, we'll also be converting those words into JERNs and using that particular format for them in order to create that uniformity of language. I submit it for its first reading.
Great, thank you. Next up is the reports from school board members. This past month, there was a Northeast Metro 916 board meeting from September 14th. Marcia?
It's kind of a quick meeting, not a whole lot to report, but we did get a construction update. I had mentioned earlier at meetings, there are two new schools that are being built. One is in Oakdale and that's called Pancalo, Pancalo Education Center. And the second one is more recent construction, and that is the Cora Education Center in Roseville. And both projects are proceeding with the schedules despite some rain delays that they've had. So, it's good to see things moving along. Probably the big item was the Q Comp Plan. This is the first year now that Northeast Metro 916 will be... This is the first year now that Northeast Metro 916 will be participating in the Q Comp program. And the Q, Q Comp, it's going to be providing the district with $700,000 to $800,000 for teacher professional development. And so each staff member, each, excuse me, each teacher has an incentive of $1,800 that they can earn to use toward staff development activities. And three teachers and instructional coaches also gave presentations and updated us on the work that they had done over the summer and to create curriculum scope and sequence. And they also are in the process of developing just this wonderful portal for all the teachers to use. It's, it's a great thing, and hopefully, in the future, it'll be available for member districts to model. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Next up is our important future school board dates, beginning tomorrow evening, the Northwest Suburban Integration School Districts Joint Power Board will be holding its meeting at their offices off of West Broadway in Brooklyn Park at seven, or excuse me, 6:15. AMSD Board Meeting, October 7th, 7:00 to 9:00 AM at the Ties Conference Center. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held October 12th at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School. Our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be held October 18th, beginning at 5:30 with a work session in Conference Room A. The open forum at 7:00 PM, also in Conference Room A, and the biz meets meeting here in the council chambers at 7:30 PM. Also, looking a long way out, just to give you a little bit, Matt had mentioned earlier that the truth in taxation meeting will be held December 20th at 7:00 PM, again, here in the city council chambers. One other important date to note is that we do have a vacancy now on our school board. So if anyone's interested, there will be information on our website. There, they can see what the application process is, see the application itself, and put that together. We are accepting applications until October 7th for that position. With that, is there any other items for this evening? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lindblad, seconded by Pruado, to adjourn the meeting at 8:07. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you.